To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ray was not able to be here this evening. The first thing on the agenda is approving minutes from our March meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Ray, the motion who's second? Very second, all those in Beijing. Tammy, you're up.
Good afternoon. Or evening, I guess. I'm just here tonight to introduce Lindsay Wine as the new administrator of the Health Department. I'll be there until the 29th, but Lindsay started last Monday. We've been working really hard on bringing her up to speed on grants and today we talked about budgets. And so, this is Lindsay, Ray Black, Gary Copeland, Judy Smith, Heather Foy, Pam Krueger, Chris Shelton, and Ray Denning, but Ray's not here today. And you know Kristen and Heather from that. So, one thing that we have been working on, I think just Heather kind of wanted to mention tonight, right, about the grants and the separate fund.
Yes, so part of our audits, I have found out that a lot of her federal grants that run through the Health Department actually should be running through a separate fund for each one of those audits. So, we stake board of accounts recommended that we not change anything right now, but moving forward. So, we will be creating new funds for each of those grants and we will have to advertise and appropriate all the expenses to those as they come through. So...
Only federal, if it's an additional state grant, that is not necessary?
They really wouldn't answer that for me. They said it's technically not required, but we prefer, so...
So, every single one?
I'm, I am trying to go with everyone. There are some occasions that it's easier and it's not required, we'll go through the normal fund, but for the most part, we're doing a new fund for everything.
They kind of said that when they were, when our thing, they prefer all the grants to be...
So, every single one?
So, right now, in one of them that we did go ahead and change, and I think Heather will probably send something out to get advertising for you guys to vote on in the next meeting, is the COAG grant, that $220,000 and the higher tier employees, because we hadn't spent any of that yet, so it was easy to start it like right now and go forward. The rest of the grants, as you guys know, goes with the state fiscal year, which is not our fiscal year. So, we're waiting till July to start those. And I think really, right now, there's just two, the emergency preparedness and the immunization grant, because the rest of those, those other COVID grants will expire by then. So, and I don't know whether they're going to renew those. So, right now, I think there'll just be three additional funds for the Health Department.
So, that when the grants come in, they'll have to be put into the fund and then redistributed back from that fund, is that correct, Heather?
So, if it's a, so if it's an expense such as health insurance that's already budgeted out of the $1159 fund, then we will actually make a check from the new grant fund over, but we'll have to appropriate it in the new fund as well. So...
So, what I did for like the COAG grant, I know the two positions. So, I asked Heather to set up the fund, so we already have a fund number. I asked her to set up a revenue line item, because that revenue will be coming from the state. And then I asked her to set up two positions, the COAG nurse, COAG clinical, and all the benefits for those positions, and then just like a general supplies and travel and training, because there's some training centers that nurses would really benefit from. And so, asked her to, I mean, it's $220,000, but I only asked to appropriate like whatever their salaries are, and then a little in travel and a little in the other way. So, it'll come to you just like any other appropriation of the $1159.
The main thing is that we have to advertise them now, is where previously in grants, we had not been advertising them, but we had not had a federal audit in a while. So, that put us back on track as to where we need to be.
You're welcome. Lindsay will be here next month, she'll probably talk to you about all the new fund for the COAG and that appropriation, whatever.
She's going to like to work, right?
I put her right in the chair from day to day. All right, and you guys know where I am and know where Lindsay is if you have any questions. Thank you.
Amanda?
So, I think you guys got a copy of the transfer, or it's actually, I'm asking for a line item created in our sales disclosure fund for an additional $10,000 for part-time. Back original budget time, I was approved for $6,000 and I've not, no one wants to work for $6,000. I can't even, $6,000 doesn't even promise someone a day a week. I have gotten some resumes, but when they find out how much it's for, they're not, no longer interested. So, I'm asking for $10,000 to be appropriated out of the current sales disclosure fund, which I have a status sheet that was printed at the end of March. We currently have, it'll be a little bit more than this, $26,579.44 in there. So, there's plenty of money in there to support the $10,000. And that way, I can hopefully get someone in there to help out in the office. That'll give me three days a week for someone to come in and help out with sales disclosure forms.
So, will these people need to be trained to be able to do that? I mean, they'll have to go through training and everything?
We will train them. Yeah, they don't have to have additional training. I'm a Level 3, the other two girls in the officer are Level 2s. I don't intend to have a part-time person get their Level 2, just because that's an expense to the county for them to get it and then to also maintain it. And with being part-time, I don't deem it as necessary to have all of that happen. And the sales disclosure funds can only be used for certain things. I did find that code, if anyone wants that. And one of the things is verification of information and administering this chapter, which is the sales disclosure. So, we would be able to by law use that money in that fund for an employee.
We've used those in the past, hold on. What's the balance in that fund?
The 22, what was it?
Well, it was $26,579, so it's probably several hundred more than that now from March.
Okay, so you'd be taking $10,000 from that for the year, for the rest of this year. So, is this something down the road that you're going to ask for more help in the office? For part-time?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions about this or audits you might need it? And you're thinking you're needing someone at least three days a week?
Yeah, as you guys all probably know, the market has been crazy for the last years. It's not slowed down, so we're getting sometimes 20 sales disclosures a day, every other day. So, that's a lot when you're now down to three people in the office to process along with the normal daily issues and everything that comes up that we have to deal with.
So, then we will, you want to vote on this later time then, on any of that? Or we can, we vote on that now, or you want to do that?
It's up to you. I have it on the cheat sheet.
It is on, it's on our sheet. While she is here, if you, you know, I think we might as well go ahead and cover that while she's here.
None of the $6,000 that was allocated has been spent yet, obviously.
No, I've had some good resumes come in, which I figured five of them being good resumes, that when they heard how limited it was going to be, they weren't interested in the job anymore. So, hopefully this will help.
So, what kind of like per hour are you paying, are you going to use that? Because you're on the...
I have figured at $14 an hour, so I mean, that's a... What?
Nothing.
The hourly rates right now are very competitive everywhere.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and with saying to someone, you know, you can work three days a week, that's a lot different than, well, maybe two days this week, but nothing for two weeks and then a day here. So, hopefully, hopefully the 16 combined will be, will help get somebody in.
And are you flexible with the days that they can come in?
Yeah.
Do you all want to vote on that now, or do you want to wait?
I think we should just go ahead and vote now, if you want to.
So, do I have a motion that...
That's my recommendation.
Yeah, that's fine. I need all the help I can get. For the Sessor Part-Time and additional $10,000, do I have a motion for that?
I have a motion.
And, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. If you have anyone in mind, tell us to be the resume, because I need it.
That's the difference.
And that's what that look was for, it's just like, I said that was what that look was for.
Yeah, stuff, it's stuff finding, and I know, that's why I was asking how many days and so what kind of hour, what kind of price, okay?
Thanks, guys.
While we're kind of there with backtrack to the treasure that we had, well, we're going to do that, because that was here, was here to come later.
Yeah, she's not here yet, she was planning to be here at 5:30 if you guys had any questions.
We'll just wait and see.
But if you don't, then, I mean, Megan was going to come if there were any questions.
Let's just wait, we'll just wait then, we'll just wait then. Okay, Jill, your moment?
Nope, you're fine. Good evening, my name is Jill Spaulding, and this is Luke. We are with PHI Air Medical, so we are with the helicopter that's based here at the airport now in Madison. And the reason for us coming tonight is we actually presented to the commissioners last week a proposal to cover all the residents here in Jefferson County with our membership program. So, on the right-hand side of your folder that I provided is just a, let me show you. Just a small little presentation that we'll just quickly go over, just to kind of give you a little bit of background on what we are. So, all of our bases, we have 63 bases and counties so far in the United States, and all of them are staffed 24/7/365, with a flight nurse, flight medic, and a pilot. We also are the only air medical provider that carries whole blood onboard, which may not seem like a big deal, but it is a life-saving. We also are certified in a lot of different areas and also provide free education to our communities, hospitals, schools, businesses, you name it, we do it, whether you have a membership or not. On the page that says countywide coverage, you will see a map there. And what we were proposing is a little bit different than our national membership. So, I'll explain just real quickly. On a countywide membership, we know that most, most communities don't have the funding available to provide a mass coverage to all the residents. So, we've broken it down into a smaller, more feasible budget. And so, what that means is if you choose to provide membership to all your residents, they have full coverage with us if they are flown from Jefferson County or any adjacent county out. And so, a question is, what does that mean? If a resident doesn't have any insurance, we write the entire bill off. If they have medical insurance, we bill that medical insurance first. What insurance doesn't cover, we pay, including their deductible, their out-of-pockets, and their coinsurances. And so, it's kind of twofold, because then our bills usually come in before your ambulance, your hospital, your surgeries, that sort of thing. When those bills come into your residence, it shows that their deductibles and out-of-pockets have already been met without them physically paying. So, now, instead of that resident paying these astronomical bills for their flight, they now are putting their money back into the local hospital bill, the EMS bill, doctors, surgeries, that type of thing. In Indiana, you guys are fortunate enough, we are the largest air medical provider in Indiana with seven bases so far. So, in 20, I had some numbers pulled, which I didn't have when I was at the meeting last week. In 2021, we were second call for Jefferson County, meaning our base was not here yet, but you also have coverage from our Seymour base. And just last year alone, we flew 52 patients from Jefferson County, and that was second call. So, this year, January to March, we've already flown 16, just from Jefferson County. So, obviously, now that our, now that our base is here, those numbers are going to be even more because we're first call in Jefferson County, okay? So, you guys are fortunate enough to have a few different helicopters that you can access pretty quickly if we have a multi-scene accident. You'll also kind of see that on the next page with our service areas. And then I followed up with an additional page that shows you the difference between a countywide and our national membership. And the reason I do this, we have counties that cover all of their residents, but I have residents who attend the meetings that say, this is great, but I work outside of that area. So, I'm not in my own county or the adjacent counties very much, but I'm outside of that. So, what we do is, when a county provides the countywide coverage to the resident, we go back and allow the residents to upgrade out of their own pocket. So, their cost would be $45 for the entire year for their entire household. Doesn't matter how many people live in that house, doesn't matter. It doesn't matter how many people, and it's $45 for the whole year for that address. And that means they would have coverage with all 63 bases. So, if they're out of town, which there's a map on the next page, you'll see all the different locations that we have, as long as PHI flies them, same thing, we cover the entire bill. So, that is the difference between a countywide and a national membership. County, we're asking you just to pay the small portion for the limited coverage, and then we allow the residents to upgrade at their own cost if they so choose to. So, what I'm proposing is, we go off of census data. So, you may have more households than this at this time, but it doesn't matter, because our attorneys go off of the last posted data. So, we showed 12,833 households. With that many households, we can do $6 a household per year for this coverage, which brings your agreement to $76,998, which is in that folder as well. So, essentially, one flight a year and it's covered. And we've already done 16 so far this year, January, February, March.
Okay, so you're saying that each, each household, how do they, if the county would pick up this amount, this is what you're saying, then do you put it out to the rest of the residents and that type of thing? Or if they're not, if they're not going to hook into the $6,000, or to the, to the other, or the $45 or whatever it is, then, then we're all with those people?
So, if you choose to cover all the residents, every resident is covered. Okay? Because what happens is, when a flight comes in and they contact me, we look at the address. And as long as the address is for somebody who lives in Jefferson County and their flight originated from Jefferson County or an adjacent county, then we zero out the bill. If it's outside of that jurisdiction, then hopefully they had the upgrade. If they didn't have the upgrade, then that, that bill would be their responsibility. But what we do with counties that currently utilize our coverage is we do a press release, we do like a community day where we bring the helicopter, we set up a table, we put newspaper articles, radio. There's different ways that different counties do different things. Warren County has been with us for five years, I think this is going on their fifth year. And they even chose to put a little, a little piece of paper in every tax bill that they mailed out with the promo code, just reminding people, hey, it's a new year. Make sure you renew your upgrade if you want to. So, it's up to the county how they want to do it, but we've done all kinds of things from community events to newspaper, radio.
What's the current rate for, you know, from here to Louisville, for example?
Every flight is different, because it depends on the distance, it depends on what is used. But I can tell you, on average, even a Medicare patient right now, after Medicare pays, on average, is $3,500 to $5,500 they would still be responsible for. Somebody who doesn't have insurance, you're looking at anywhere from $60,000 to $80,000 on up. And the other thing that we've seen is, we've had, especially over the last year, we've had a lot of hospitals on divert, meaning either they don't have the staffing or they're full of COVID, so we can't land there, or they can't keep the patient there. So, then what happens is, their local EMS is not allowed to go that far out of the county to take them to the next level trauma center, because then that leaves the county with no EMS. So, then they're calling us for flights. And so, I use this in the commissioners meeting, but our Evansville base had to fly three patients all the way to Tennessee, to Nashville, Tennessee, because that was the closest trauma center. So, Indiana to Tennessee, and it's based on flight time and miles and all kinds of stuff, those were astronomical bills. Astronomical. So, those are all things to kind of take into consideration when you are looking at providing something like this to your community, really. Because these bills, even if you have insurance, are a lot on families, especially now that deductibles and out-of-pockets, where it used to be $500 to $1,500, have now had to increase to, I know ours is like $3,500 or something, just for our deductible. So, even if I had insurance and it covered part of the flight, I still have my deductible and my co-pays and my out-of-pockets, which now used to be this amount and now it's this amount. So, those are all things that we take into consideration when we're looking at a county to provide coverage to the residents.
My two questions, I guess, and you could certainly follow back up with us and provide the information. I obtained it a little quicker than we could. One is, I've been in healthcare 26 years and I've never heard of any type of membership structure for a service like this ever. So, I'm just curious how long, you know, a plan like this has been in place. And then also, out of our Indiana counties, you mentioned Evansville, how many are currently offering and subsidizing a plan like this? The average person here, statistically, none of us in this room are ever going to take a medical helicopter ride. I'm not saying it's not valued, and if I ever have to, I, I know how costly the bill will be. I'm just curious, how many other counties are onboard with something like this?
There are other air medical providing companies that don't offer a membership program. We have for years, like 50-plus years. But we used to always focus on traditional memberships, which would mean individual households. And so, over the course of the last five years, really, have we really been looking at the impacts that it's having on the communities? And how many people have had to file bankruptcy and how, you know, just the cost of everything? And so, we started then providing this program to counties. Currently, Warren County and Fountain County, they have our countywide membership. Those are the two that have signed and have been with us in Indiana so far. This is new for this area, because this base is brand-new. We don't just go sell countywides to any county in the states where we fly. We try to strategically figure out what makes the most sense, who has the most flights, where our bases are located. I've got one in Mississippi, I've got two in Kentucky. So, I've got other countywide membership programs, but Indiana, Warren, and Fountain are the ones right now. And then Jackson and Switzerland County are in the works right now.
It's not a lot.
No, but it's a, I mean, it's, it's a large amount of money.
It's not a lot, but yeah.
Yeah, it's a large amount, but I'll tell you, it, because over the last two years, the flight volumes have increased so significantly and we're being used more, more counties now are contacting us instead of the other way around, because it makes more sense for their community instead of it being on the residents. But Jackson County, which is Seymour, the reason they're looking at it is even last year, they hit 90 flights, just in Jackson. So, multiply that times however much their bills were, you know? And again, we can do their entire county for two flights. So, if the county has the budget, that's, that's why we're, you know, presenting to counties now.
Does anybody have other questions or anything at this time? They're asking, you know?
Yeah, ask away.
Maybe we don't know what to ask, you know?
I'll pick Troy Morgan's brain after.
Yeah.
I think Troy was the EMS director for years.
Yeah, please do.
You know, I think, yeah.
I'm struggling to think of this right now, but yeah.
Yeah, please do. And I have other, you know, counties, their commissioners, their EMA directors, you know, they've all, Switzerland County has been talking to them for the last two weeks, Jackson County's been talking to them. So, feel free, if you guys want names, phone numbers, emails, just let me know and not a problem at all.
I do have one question for you. So, you say your membership fee is based on 12,833 households?
Yes.
So, and you're saying that it covers the entire Jefferson County footprint?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, any resident in Jefferson County. So, that number is going to go up and down throughout the year, it doesn't matter. We don't go back and reevaluate it until it's a year later, and then they pull the new census data. So, if there's...
That's not our census status for the whole entire county?
And if it's less, if it's more, doesn't matter, because this is what they're quoting, and they won't reevaluate it for a year, because it's good for 12 months. And there's, and there's a five-day waiting period. So, if there is a service agreement that gets put in place, all the residents would be covered five days later and then for 12 consecutive months from that date.
And the $76,998 is per year?
Per year.
Per year.
Yes. And we've only had one rate increase in 15 years, so hopefully, hopefully there's not going to be anymore. We don't see that to be an issue, but...
Seven years ago, my flight was $49,000.
I know, I have a friend that was $46,000, so my husband and I took out helicopter, whatever. We had a plane. And then that helicopter was no longer available in Jefferson County, so we like ended our plan. And we were like, what if we get flown? And then we're out a large amount of money, because our insurance provider does not, you know, cover that cost.
Well, a lot of people think that insurance covers the entire thing, but it doesn't.
And it does not.
It does not, not even Medicare.
No.
But the other thing I was going to say, luckily, you guys have Seymour and Madison. So, you guys are covered by both super quick. And then we also have other ones that could come down in here. But another thing that was brought up in one of the meetings, is it just a one flight per household and it's done? No, we do a lot with ICR racing up in northern Indiana, and we flew a racer twice in the same year. We had two different accidents and we cover both.
Question, do you fly outside of the Louisville, Indianapolis, and Cincinnati area?
Yeah, so you'll see there, I put a couple of different maps in there. So, one is the national map that shows all of our locations currently in the U.S. And then the other one shows you all of Indiana and our flight radius. But the reason I brought up Evansville to Nashville, Tennessee, is I don't want you to think that Evansville, like, once they get out of that bubble, they can't go any further. If they have to go to a trauma center and that's the closest one, they're going to go. Yeah, but that's just to give you kind of an idea of what their coverage area is. Any other questions?
Anybody else want to ask any questions, you know? I think this is something we can mull over and, you know, talk to commissioners and so forth. It's, I'm like, I'm like, it is expensive, extremely expensive. And, you know, if we can help our community in some way, that, you know, we will discuss it and...
Okay, and my comments in there, if anybody wants to reach out to me directly and you have additional questions or need phone numbers, emails, or want any other data, just let me know. All right, thank you. I'll just go through here, thank you.
Josh, I think you're up.
Oh, you're welcome, you're, you're welcome.
Thank you so much, guys, for coming and presenting.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay. May you have, as I said, you asked for also came up here. This, part of this is the study that goes back to questions that were coming up during the budget hearing last time about the staffing, the numbers, where we had put in... the budget hearing last time about the staffing, the numbers, where we had put in for X amount for the jail staff to maintain our flow, and also re, the categorization of the names of who is doing what job, and actually getting classified right of the numbers and discrepancies of us saying, this is how many jailers we have, this person's doing control, these people are doing courthouse, and lining the budget back out. And we went back also and looked at it, where they were using, the last jail study for the current facility was done in two thousand thirteen. Chris went and asked for a current jail study to see our facility, then also the comparison of going to the new facility due to the fact that it's tripling the bed count and the staffing issue. So with this, we have a current one from the Indiana Sheriff's Association, Bill Wilson prepared. He's the same one that did it in two thousand thirteen, came back and said our staffing were about ten-point to read individuals short on our staffing for our current facility. And that bridges the gap into the new facility, where we're forty-three, forty-four individuals?
Yeah, roughly thirty-seven need to be added periodically through the year to compensate for the new jail. Currently, ten short, take the ten out of the thirty-seven.
With that, uh, the numbering of it, it goes through the job descriptions. It talks about the current, uh, study down here for our facility that we have at Walnut Street. Uh, the information was provided, uh, last year about the new facility and the staffing setting with it, and then also the request for the cost analysis of what a yearly budget was going to run are all documented in that portfolio there. Major went through and ear-tabbed the marks on it to correspond it to each of those with the front of it with the index for them. It's a lot to go over, a lot of information, but the big key point of it is to, right now, we're running short staffing, keeping individuals, we're about ten people short, ten-point-three-five. When they factor it in, that allows us to have people take their vacation, their sick time, the holidays, all the compensation that we do in fringe benefit package if we let them off. I know it was one time I went down to the jail in the middle of the night. There was one guy working the complete floor, and one guy sitting in the control room, rolling all the doors, answering all the phone calls, rolling the garage door. And that's pretty, pretty sad, unacceptable. But again, it was with medical, people sick, individuals off, and they're busting their butts to do what it takes to go and keep it going. But we're understaffed in that side of it all. There's a lot for you guys to go and process there, so.
Yes.
For you to read every second of it right now?
No.
Do you have anything to add?
The only thing it doesn't include is going to be the logistics, operational part, once we move, about getting people down here for court and back and forth. So that's the only thing this book doesn't include, because that's going to just take some planning mid-year once we get closer and figure out how we're going to do that.
And that's with the in-court appearances that they're going to want to have, instead of us being in a physical, one city block, walk across an alley, whoops, judge doesn't need them anymore, the court doesn't need them anymore. Oh, you wanted Corey instead of Cody, his brother's in there, whoops, we got to go switch them out. Now we're going to be going from the hilltop to the downtown. Video court is being discussed with that. Under COVID, it's caused them to go and use it. Does that mean that's necessarily what the Supreme Court ruling, Indiana State, as far as trial rules, having people in there? Can they have video court? Does a person demand that they be present in the courtroom with their attorney, with the judge, and the prosecution? So those are, goes back to the word logistics that he's talking about, that we are trying to work with it. But there are some that are going to be creating us a headache of making sure they go back and forth every day to that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, was, there was supposed to be a small trial area inside of the new jail, correct?
It was, it was scrubbed. When they started hearing the cost of it, it was, we're not paying for it, and that was dropped real quick.
I thought it was supposed to be.
There is two video courtrooms. There is two video courtrooms in the new jail. But some things will have to be live hearings. Even now, we do video court. But there's probably ten to fifteen every other day that have to go physically over to the courthouse. So it'll be a mix of both.
Yeah, because that was, that was supposed to be one of the requirements. Scrub, scrub for cost, nobody took a calculation wrong.
That was where we were talking about putting a large trial room up there where the judges had come up and asked.
Yeah, for trials, I understand completely, but for day-to-day court, that should be handled on property. We are not going to transfer outside the building.
Yeah, there'll be some there.
And the other question, I wish the Daves were here, Commissioner Brammer and Dave Thomas. The, uh, the design of this jail was supposed to be such that it would lessen, or maybe not lessen, but reduce the staffing because of the visibility and the layout.
It is, but we're going from a hundred-nine-bed facility to a three-hundred-bed facility. So it's, it brings about a much more efficiency with the layout of the establishment of the building, but again, a larger surface area needing additional.
But technically, we won't be above two-forty per state guidelines, when we have to be twenty percent below capacity.
That's what we would hope.
That's what we hope, yeah.
All right. So how many, right at the moment, the normal question, how many do you have in-house and that's out?
I was going to say, I looked at the census, uh, yesterday, and I believe it was one-seventy-eight, and we had about forty out.
One-seventy-eight in-house?
I believe so, and about forty out. I can step in the hallway and give you the direct numbers if you want those, that current number.
That's over two hundred, do you have a?
No, no, no. The, the.
Total is one-seventy-eight. Oh, minus forty, okay.
Thank you, this is excellent, be very helpful.
Thank you. To look over and so forth, you know, and everything that's right. So how is the jail coming along, do we know, or have you, you all, you track the data, or is that?
Yeah, they said it's over fifty percent. I, what's the projected finish date?
Uh, this time next year, so it's going good. Myself, commissioners are always there with the construction workers. We have, we, uh, bi-weekly meetings, some meetings through the week, so it's going, it's going well. The only problem is the weather, that's, that's hindered them a little bit, but they're still pushing forward. No major hiccups so far.
And a lot of procuring the supplies ahead of time with noticing that, because we're not hitting any of the supply chain issues too much that we're coming in, so purchasing with forethought made it a lot easier for us, or we could be on the backside of it.
Want to add, catch any other questions? Okay, thanks, Josh. Thank you.
Any other questions, Alex, going to be asked? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we want to do, we have somebody else out there, is anybody else out there?
Megan's out there now.
Who?
Megan's out there, if there's any questions.
Okay, yeah. Please.
Even so, we're here.
Do we, does anybody have any questions for Megan from the treasure? We're going to backtrack to the, asking for the extra ten thousand, and you have somebody in there now working, correct? And everything? So, and, and she's working out, I mean, or he, I don't know what she is, you know? Is she working out okay, is she?
Yes, she's doing great.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? If not, we will, you know? Sure, and this ten thousand is to, is part-time money? Is that correct, is that correct?
It is a full-time, it's already starting full-time. This person is working every day.
And because, because of the fact that they're, we're going to lose some, yes.
Because the staffs will be changing so much by the end of the year.
And I do know one of the staff is out now on medical.
And it's been wonderful that we actually discussed this at the last meeting, because there's been a medical emergency that required that person to be out. So now, the new employee got, she was thrown right in, and she is doing excellent.
It was perfect timing, so everything really worked out.
It was a great training opportunity.
Yeah, I guess this has been advertised, so that we can go ahead and.
Yes, I advertised it last month.
Um, and since that was something brought on, I know that you just got here, and there's not a whole lot that, you know? Uh, but does anybody have any other questions for that, for that position, or, you know, and everything? Is, how is that going? Is that really going all right right now as the tax, things are coming in and so forth?
Yes.
Busy.
Busy, I, I'm sure you're very busy, you know? Do we have a motion for the, for the, the increase that the treasure amount for ten thousand dollars?
Somewhere.
One second. Okay, one second, and Chris? All those in favor? Okay, well, I know you rushed here and everything, but we thank you for coming and everything, you know, and so on. Hope this works out, and I hope the medical other problems gets.
Yes, thank you very much.
Taken care of quickly.
I, thank you, I appreciate it.
A hundred and eighty on the census, thirty-seven out, so a hundred and forty-three in-house per.
Okay, in, in the house. Okay, thank you, Josh. Thank you very much. Okay, Coombs?
I think so.
Are we down to that?
Yep. So as previously discussed, I advertised the, um, coom rate as the following, that Coombridge would now be point zero six on every one hundred. Um, Coom Courthouse would be reduced to point oh-one-two. And Coom Jail would be increased to point oh-one-five-three.
Is there anyone here, because this is an open meeting for that, because it was advertised, if anyone had any questions or wanted to ask any questions or anything that they could from the, from the audience? Yes.
Yeah. Okay, well, my name's John Kraus. I'm a new resident here from, uh, Los Angeles, as of about four and a half years ago.
Okay.
And, uh, anyhow, so, uh, I'm interested in, you know, getting involved in, in all that with, what's going on around the town. Anyhow, um, I read that, you know, about the, the tax.
Right.
Now, this is a bridge tax to be imposed, a new tax?
It's not a new tax. So we already have a cumulative jail tax, we already have a Coom courthouse and a Coom bridge. We are only decreasing Coom courthouse and increasing Coom jail and Coom bridge the same amount as the decrease. So it will be a wash across, so there's not any additional tax.
Are you sure?
Yes.
This is being documented.
Yes.
Okay, I hope so.
Pretty sure.
No, no new property tax.
No new property tax to these funds.
No new property tax from this.
To these funds.
No, sir.
You've heard that.
All right, okay.
That is not, it is just something that the, the Coom courthouse.
For redistributing.
We get kind of moving around, the Coom courthouse had a great deal of money in it, and it's not being needed as much. And we know that with the new jail coming up, that it is needed, and it's also Coom Bridge, because if these bridges go down.
There are several federal bridge projects coming up. That as there will be federal grants for that, they still have matching to the grants, so their budgets will be larger than.
Yeah.
What they have been.
We have to match, we have to match so much to the federal and the state grants and things and so forth. But there is no, no new tax. It is just, you kind of, we're just kind of shifting it, you know?
So.
I do appreciate you asking for clarification.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and thanks that.
Yeah.
Well, that's it, and I, I find it funny how a lot of my neighbors that I've talked with about this, they say, oh, that's not good, all that. I said, well, there's a meeting Tuesday, go to it. Where are my neighbors? I mean, but complain later. It's like, no, complain at the right time.
That's right, you're right, that's right.
Otherwise, you know?
Part of the misunderstanding is, for this, the state requires me to advertise with specific wording. So it does read that it is a new tax, but it is not.
It is not.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Did that clear that, that part's around?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, when you just kind of move it around.
Redistribute, I mean, when you talk about it, but it's the wording.
Because the one fund is lowering, and I really wanted it to say that, that we are lowering that tax, but.
But they would not let you, it, it, you know?
It's the state required verbiage.
Do you have somebody else?
Uh, is there no possibility of lowering taxes? If you, if you have areas that you can lower, and you are lowering, can you increase in other areas not as much as you want in this proposal?
That would be a you got.
I can, I can speak from, from military experience, you, you had a budget. And if you didn't spend everything in your budget for that fiscal year.
You lost it.
They would decrement you that amount.
Exactly.
Is, well, is that situation here? Because I, part of that experience is seeing an awful lot of wasted spending. And I'm not talking from military times, but if, if you can drop some taxes, wouldn't that be good?
I would, I would say that because of the jail project and the increased costs of, uh, the materials, the, uh, shipping materials to the site, uh, I would say it would be unwise to change that at this time, uh, just because of the, uh, there's, it's kind of hard to predict what the jail is going to cost.
And the bridge? Are we, are we expecting to have to match funds this year with the bridge?
Well, I, I, no, maybe commissioners can answer that on the bridges, but there are bridges, am I not correct, out there? They inspect them every so often, and, and then if they don't meet the criteria on it and everything, then, then they have to be shut down until they can be repaired or, or replaced. And so those bridges, they're, and they're getting older as we speak, you know, the bridges daily, you know? So, am I, am I speaking correctly, commissioners?
Right, we have inspection every year, only when we have companies that are certified. And if they find any weakness, discrepancy, if it's bad enough, you may have to shut it down till it's replaced, like we've had someone drive for, you know, and floor places, not that big of a structure. But then maybe they may have to reduce the load rating until that point in time it is repaired, you know, quick, so.
I think there's a couple in the county right now that's on a, that has been restricted the loads.
Yeah, three-twenty-five. Three-twenty-five, just got.
Three-twenty-five had to be.
Got to take the buses off of it, because the culverts are.
Yes.
Little bridge is some of that.
Most of our budgets, I will say, most of our, like, I call blind items, because I work in the financial industry, but most of our budgets, um, are, they do get spent every year. And we, when we go to budget time every July, July through August, and we actually meet in August, the offices work on their budget proposals and get them to us by August of every year. And we go through them with a fine-tooth comb, and we try to find ways of cutting those budgets every year, and try to find a way to increase, whether it's give each county employee a fifty-dollar raise each year. And then, um, that being said, without raising taxes to the, to the Jefferson County taxpayers, by being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars. So looking at that, there are budgets that we have, or blind items, whatever you want to call them, that do have a leftover balance, and those may be bridges and those types of accounts. And the reason why they may have, and so I'm, I'm just kind of explaining that just a little bit. Maybe the reason why those would be leftover balances carried over into the next year would be because of projects that we do see down the road, such as bridges that will be repaired, um, highways that are going to have, uh, things coming up, um, the jail, and those types of things that we know that are projects that are still going on. And that would not allow us to see a decrease in, in taxes into the, the taxpayer dollars, taxpayers to Jefferson County. Looking down the road and looking forward, um, it concerns me, because as we see the impacts of what has transpired over the last two years, and it concerns me that as costs of goods increase to not only the jail project that Ray mentioned, but the cost of goods for projects for just gravel, and just cost of goods just across the board, paper supplies, everything, that when we reach the table in August every year, what are we going to do to find the fifty-dollar increase or that in percent increase for just our county employees? And when we look at the pay structure, and when I roll my eyes, looking at the, just the ten thousand dollars that we're trying to find to pay our part-time person, when we look at those salaries that our county employees are working with, those county employees that are, are being paid don't even equate to what an average, um, uh, person makes at an entry-level position in a, in a job, uh, job workforce right now. So compensating our county employees is going to be something that we're going to face in the next, looking down the road. So I think that these are things that we're going to face as a county council, and, um, so I'm really, um, I'm happy and pleased that we haven't had to raise taxes, uh, in any large increments to our, our county taxpayers. So just saying that I'm really glad that we haven't had to push forward a tax increase. And I would love to do a decrease. And I would love to do a decrease, but I, I just don't think that that's feasible. So, that's my roundabout way of making any answer to you.
Yeah, now, you say the last two years, what I've noticed is, is a lot more money coming in as a result of what's going on to offset the higher costs. There's a lot more investors that come in, what does that mean? I found out that you guys charge double than that of an owner-occupied property, right, for property taxes? For that, pretty much double.
That would be probably.
That's about right.
Because it does not have a homestead on that property. Most generally, we say double.
Right, so we've got that. We've got stellar grant money coming in, we've got tourism money coming in. There's that, when I rack it all up, I'm thinking like, for a town of thirteen thousand people, you're bringing in a lot of money. I mean, a lot of money. And I'd like to know how all that's appropriated, that, you know, just to see where all this is going, because I kind of.
And then we have some other things that's not coming in, like, we used to have a lot of money coming in from Belterra and some of those grant-funded, and it no longer comes in. So, when you get, that money comes in, and then you have some money that's not, so we're like, you know, thankful that we have some other money coming in that kind of balances that out. So, that's, that's also a blessing too, so you have some things that are balancing out. So, we'll also see this year, when the state gives us the allocation, and help me out when I don't speak properly.
The budget order.
The budget, yeah.
Thank you.
The budget order.
When those come in, if, if that increases, you know, hopefully, we can do some different things. I lost my train of thought.
One other thing I'll add is that, before we added the jail tax, uh, we were third lowest in the state for tax rate.
Before?
Before the tax rate. We're still in the.
Before taxes.
Yes.
Now with the state.
Now, we are in, still in the bottom third of the state of counties for the lowest tax rate in the entire state. So, you know, nobody likes tax, to raise taxes, and I don't like paying taxes, but, you know.
Well, none of us do, of course, but, but when they, like, for me, I moved here four and a half years ago. I paid X amount, now I'm paying over double that. In California, people tried to get by with that kind of thing. Back in nineteen seventy-eight, there's what's called the Jarvis Scam Initiative, Prop thirteen, because what happened was this, people would work all their lives, pay off their homes, retire, and then all of a sudden would lose their homes because of local property taxes. And, and so, I kind of don't want to see that going on here in a way, because I'm kind of concerned that, gee, you know, why am I paying double of what I paid just four years ago? And another four years, is that going to go up threefold, fourfold? It, it is concerning. And then when I hear that we have a deputy mayor that we never really had before in the past, from what I understand, and then we have eighteen new city work, city public works employees, I'm kind of thinking, okay, why, why all this all of a sudden for the same amount of population? What, what is this? Is, I, I kind of want to know what is the purpose and what the town is really trying to do.
That goes to the city.
It goes to, well, that, I'm telling you.
It's the town.
Oh.
This is town.
Well, okay.
And that's a little confusing too, because the city.
Yeah.
Although we, we try to work in tandem, the city and, and, and the county are a little different. So, the city has its own tax base, and they get their own tax funds. And one of the other great things that we did, and you probably know this from the commissioners, but we did get federal grant money, ARPA money, that was given to the county. And the commissioners get to propose to the county council, you know, how they get to spend that money. And it, it is utilized within the county for infrastructure and different projects. And it, it will go and be utilized, they will propose it, and they will find things for infrastructure, and they'll go back and take a look at things that say there were some deficiencies within, you know, the fire departments that weren't able to raise money during the COVID crisis, and there were shortages. And so, they'll be able to maybe utilize that and bolster their accounts when they were not able to raise money and, and, and put in their, for example. So, those funds that came in from the federal government, they will be able to bolster their accounts. So, those, even though that we cannot put those into the budget, because those have guidelines from the federal government, the commissioners will, you know, be able to utilize those to kind of help the community, kind of give it a lift and give some things back into the community, so some infrastructure deals.
And with that, on each one of these.
So, I hope I'm helping and not.
Not muddying the water stuff.
Well, no, 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 I'm just, you know, it's my first time at one of these meetings here.
Oh, we, we welcome you. We don't have to.
We're here, sir.
Excellent question. It's a great question. And, and one other thing I'll mention is that, when I got my tax bill, I'm like shaking my head going, as well, so, uh, we're dealing with the same thing personally, ourselves, and, you know, I'm retired and.
Well, right, yeah, and, and speaking to that, it's, you know, because I talk to a lot of people, and I hear things like, well, downtown homeowners don't pay nearly as much as us hilltop people pay. That, then I was told, well, you got to look at the deductions of each household. I said, well, you told me to go on the Gateway site, you know, and again, for the city, right? And county, because it is, you know, we pay Jefferson County. And I'm thinking, my gosh, it's true that there are some houses downtown that pay less than two hundred dollars a year. Their next-door neighbor pays two thousand a year, and I'm looking at the deductions or the exemptions, whatever you call it. And they're pretty much the same. I'm like, well, how does that compute, you know? And so, there's so many, it seems like so many discrepancies. Now, where I come from, it's really a lot simpler. And I'm starting to think it might be more affordable back in California pretty soon. And here's why. Because people, when they buy a house, it's two hun, two hundred thousand, which you can't find in California, but I mean, let's just say two hundred thousand. It is one point one percent end of story of that purchase price. That's it. It doesn't go above that. And then there's maybe a minute incremental increase over many years, but it's capped, really capped, and that's it. So, you're not, no longer taxed right out of your property, you know?
But we are capped.
We do have property tax caps that are by the state. And so, if it's owner-occupied, then it's one percent.
Yeah.
And then if it's owner, if you own it, and, um, if there's a two-person, I'm trying to think how that works. Yeah, maybe we should cap the.
A duplex.
And then there's a third cap as well. Um, there's also, so, for residents that are over sixty-five, that have an adjusted gross income of either thirty thousand or below for a single filing, or forty thousand or below for a married filing, are able to file for a deduction if their assessed value is two hundred thousand or below, which is getting ready to be two hundred and forty thousand. So, the state is doing something to kind of help with that. But there's an additional cap that we take into consideration in the figuring process when that.
Well, that's what it says on the bill. Now that you brought that up, though, regarding exemptions, is there a limited exemptions if you qualify for them? Say, like, somebody who's sixty-five, but no, I'm not sixty-five, I just turned sixty.
Being a mortgage lender, there is a form from the state of Indiana that has all the exemptions listed. And I would be more than happy to share that with you if you would provide me with your email address, I could share one with you. It has all the exemptions in the state of Indiana that you could have.
And what?
It's available online.
What you can mix with.
Gateway for that, and that's.
Oh, did you?
And that's, I looked at the forms there.
If you look for the Department of Local Government Finance is where that's actually at. And you can, so it mixes, it tells you what deductions you can apply with other deductions, and which deductions are standalone, and if it's, has to be on your residence, it goes through every deduction very thoroughly.
Right, so, so like, say, a friend of mine that's, I'm still living there, so, there's a mortgage exemption, supplemental, homestead.
Right.
Disabled, and now he's over sixty-five.
And then you also, there's a military.
You can't mix age and disability.
And why not?
Because the state says. It's on.
The state says.
The state, the state says. So, it's on that sheet. It will say which ones, it says that it cannot be filed, those two cannot be filed together. But if you have disability and you are over the age of sixty-five, you can still file for that sixty-five circuit breaker. And we just recently found out about that, and we have helped several people this year with that.
Circuit breaker.
And it's for over sixty-five only.
That's income.
With income and assessed value.
But I thought it was a lot less money on income, but when I looked at the form, unless they just changed that, because thirty thousand for a single or quarter, forty.
Thirty thousand or forty thousand.
Because I thought it was like, it was a lot less.
Like seventeen?
Yeah, it used to be.
So, seventeen is for the disability, and that's only their taxable income above and beyond, I don't know. So, just only, so most social security is not taxed, so it's only their taxable portion of their income.
Now, quickly getting to the capping and all that, since I, I got to take the seas a moment. When I've gone to the office last year, I was just blown away when I went over my tax bill. And I have, in my neighborhood, on Montclair Street, right over here, and I call it West Montclair. Get away from the golf course, I'm near West Montclair, okay. And anyhow, it's a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, little home, little over twelve hundred square feet, right? So, I go there and I said, okay, you've raised my assessed value, like for most people.
Right.
Almost every house on my street is larger than mine. Uh, they have add-ons, added room, added, some, all kinds of stuff, added two-car garages and all that, right? I do not. And, and the house is almost original the way it was when it was built, and that's what I like about it. And then she goes ahead and tells me, she said, well, oh, I see that we're charging you an additional tax for your garage, a separate tax. I said, your what? And I said, but that was part of a one-unit building. It's a home with a garage. I said, yeah, I have a front door and a bedroom. Are you going to tax me separately for that too? I mean, I don't understand that. I have never in my life heard of such a thing, that you're taxing somebody that, that garage that's part of the structure. I mean, it's literally, you can see that it was never added on. What is the reason for that? Because I, I got to do this.
That would be more of an assessor question, so.
Yeah, my bad.
In the auditorium.
It's going to be tomorrow morning, bright and early, no.
Deck is, if your deck is attached, if you have a very large deck.
I have no doubt.
Yeah, but if you have a large deck.
That's an accessible item.
That's an accessible item too.
Right, and what about neighbors that have built on and that you guys don't know about, or that's it?
So, every four years, they come, they're supposed to visit every parcel, and they're on a rotation. So, sometimes you'll notice a neighborhood will have a big jump every four years, and that's why. Like, your neighbor may have built a shed and not filed the proper permit, so it wasn't picked up, and then they were able to pick up for that person.
Okay.
So, but in your case, where you don't have anything extra added, I would. I would investigate.
Yeah, because I think that, when I heard that, I thought, you've got to be kidding.
No, that's what we're doing right now.
There is a board for appeal.
A board of appeal, I would think so, yeah.
And, and, and that you, that they can, you can go through the process.
I actually just pulled up your property card.
Mine?
Yes.
Six, four, seven, Montclair, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And what is, what is calling out is the utility shed. Do you have like a small storage building?
Yes, but that has been there for years and years.
Yes, nineteen seventy, but it's, it's on there at a hundred and ninety-two square feet. So, it's not the garage they're charging separately for, it's just.
She told me the garage in that office. She told me.
She misspoke, because I'm looking at the detail here. It's got the single-family residence and then the utility shed.
Okay.
Those are the two line items.
If it's movable, they will not assess it.
Uh-huh, oh, no, it's, it's a poor foundation.
And, and if it's a poor foundation, they will assess it. If it's movable, if it's elevated, they won't.
So, when did that assessment start to take place?
Very long ago.
Yeah, when it first built.
Okay, so when, I was at the office last year, I'm telling you.
Nineteen seventy.
Okay, when I was at the office last year, she said, oh, well, we just recently started assessing people with garages.
Oh, wow.
This is what I was told. And I thought, okay, oh, wow. It's just like on TV to say, watch out for small towns, we're not kidding, you know? And, and I'm thinking like, wow, I, I just, I've never, you know, even you guys here think that that's kind of odd, right?
I think that you need to go back to the assessor's office, and even in that case, and then ask if, you know, if you're not.
I would be curious of that answer as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm thinking, my gosh, it's just, okay.
We also, Chris, because he has his laptop up, we did, Chris went in and looked, and we are the, from the bottom.
We're the eighty-ninth in the state out of ninety-two counties.
For income tax.
For income tax.
The lowest.
That's our income tax.
Yeah, ninety, yeah, ninety-two is the, is the bottom.
And we're eighty.
And we're, we're, we're eighty-nine.
So, we're still in the bottom three.
Right. And I will tell you, sir, just for an example, um, we have a, you're talking about the different cooms that we've been talking about. The coom courthouse, it, and everything, they can only be used, only for certain ways. There's regulations on each one, the coom jail, coom courthouse and everything. In two thousand and nine, the courthouse burnt, okay, so then it had to go back. What the insurance was not able to put purchase, to put back for us, what, you know, we had an insurance policy on the, on the thing, and it went so far and everything. But it was to be put back the same way that it was. Okay, when you only had, it was an old courthouse at the time, you might have two plugins in the bill, in, in each office. And so forth, so we had to make it up to code. Insurance did not pick that up, but that's where the coom courthouse was used. In other words, the fund out of the coom courthouse was used for that, and it, it was a little over five hundred thousand that we had to come up with to take care of the difference. And we already had that amount of money in the coom courthouse fund at that time. So, then we didn't have to scramble to try to find that additional five hundred thousand so we could upgrade, because we had to put in a new elevator, because the old elevator would not be.
Handicapped.
Handicapped, accessible any longer. And like they said, we didn't, there wasn't any need to put a, a building back that didn't have all the upgrades, because when that was built, they didn't have computers. You know, you didn't have, you, you only, you could run a little extension card. You bought, the, the, the commissioners can, and they're. But it was that coom, if we had not had this coom courthouse and the amount of money we had in it then, we would have been in trouble, you know, financially.
Right, okay, that, first thing I hear from that is, why was it underinsured then? Because I'm sitting.
Yeah.
Well, no, really, because we all have choices to make for the insurance policies. I know I do with my house. And I have the full replacement of what it was.
It might have been the maximum at the time, I don't know. Do you read one of your commissioners?
Yeah, I just wonder, I wonder about that.
It was twenty-five million. I know it was, it was insured to twenty-five million, and we used every penny of it, you know, we used it all. You know, I can, I, you know, I was on the council at the time.
You have an umbrella policy in addition to what you've got, and I'm sure it wasn't that at the time.
I'm sure it wasn't. I'm sure that they have increased it. You know, it's just like anything, anything, you know, you have a policy and you think, well, you know, nothing's going to happen, and you keep that same policy and, and everything, so, you know, it, that's just what I'm saying, is that it was that much less to upgrade, and they would not upgrade, you know, for us, that they wouldn't continue to upgrade anything. So, anything had to be upgraded, like I said, a new elevator and new.
No, I understand, I know that, yeah.
The insurance company would not pay for that, because it was a replacement.
Right, no, I understand, right, no, but the same thing like with here, when you look for or shop for homeowners' insurance, you ask, I want to know exactly what is covered to anticipate, say, like, damage from, supposedly tomorrow, we're going to have tornadoes and all that, I don't know. That's one thing I can't deal with around here, but anyhow, oh, my God.
We can have that too.
So, we have earthquakes, who cares? If it shake a little bit, it's over, you know? But, but no, the thing is, you know, I look out to see exactly how is my car covered? Will I get a replacement car, or will they give me an old shabby rundown in lieu of what I drive now, you know, a used vehicle? No, I want to make sure what exactly is covered and make sure that's in place. So, then that way, we don't have to pull money from additional, by disresort of whatever, you know? So, I'm assuming that it's better insured now.
I would take that over to the commissioners, but yes, I'm sure.
Uh-huh, see with the commissioner.
Those were all additional costs.
Those were additional costs that the insurance would have never covered.
I was here when that happened, and if, I kind of remember that it was, we were insured for the building as is.
As is, that's correct, and, and any new additions.
And everything extra that we had to do because of new code was at our expense.
That's our expense, and so that.
So, and that was our five hundred thousand dollar.
We couldn't have insured that unless we had possibly an, what do you call it, umbrella policy or anything like that. And I'm, I, that I do not believe they had it at that time, you know, and everything. But we were surprised, I will tell you, I was on the council at the time, and we were even surprised that they had, that the commissioners or whoever had taken care of it at the time. I was on the council at the time, and we were even surprised that they had, that the commissioners or whoever had taken care of it at the time, had insured it for the twenty-five billion dollars. And you were, you were in the working at the office there, you know, so that was, you know, it was devastating at that time, you know, so I'm just saying that some of these Coombe things, it's just like your bridges, like you said, the amount that's gonna cost to replace a bridge today compared to five years ago.
I have a question.
Yes.
The original jail, didn't we have a tax that was assessed to fix our jail then?
Yes.
What happened to that when that was paid off?
We still have that.
And it's not for the jail, right?
Use it for other, it's used for, it can be used for the jail, it is, it is a, it is, it's a, it's a lit, it's called a lit tax, and and it is used for.
So we started tax, and that tax never ends. So it was converted over to pay for something else, so that's kinda where I'm at, I'm kinda concerned that we had an expense, we had a tax to pay for that, and then that that jail was paid off, but yet we still have that tax. So as a taxpayer, I've always wondered, how did that morph from the jail into something else that was needed to be paid for, but here we are still paying that tax?
It essentially transferred from paying back the the loan or the bonds on the jail to paying for the maintenance and operations of the jail. And, but the new jail tax we had implemented for the new one, it has a hard end date.
Yes.
Per state guidelines.
Yes.
It will go.
I feel like, from a P O perspective, and I was not on the council at that time, I feel like that probably wasn't handled as well, I feel like more education could have been provided to the to the average taxpayer, because that tax was obviously implemented for a purpose, not that we, the council at that time wanted to, but obviously having such a low, low, low income tax rate, knowing the budgets had to be met, there were additional expenses that had to be covered, and that lit funding had to be used for additional operating expenses, and I don't feel like that was probably communicated well with the county. When the average person said, you're still charging us that jail's, that jail's tax, and the the jail, you know, renovations are through, I I feel like we probably could have done a better job of communicating what that money was needed for, to, so that an additional tax wasn't implemented. And like Chris said, anyhow, I think that, we hope is communicated well this time.
So this has a hard stop.
End date.
Is that on the income or on the property tax?
That was an income, there was no additional property for the jail.
It's illegal to charge a property tax for the jail.
So that's why it had to be an income tax on that. I will say, I will tell you that, as she said, there is no one on the first, on the very first one, first, uh, income tax, there's no one sitting on this board now that was on the board at the time, you you know, when that first went in, so we just, we inherited that first, the first one, you know? But we knew that it would not, cause we, down the road, before we did the other one, we were using it pretty much to take care of any problems that we were having in the jail, and knowing, then when we found out that we were gonna actually gonna have to build a new jail, because of the fact that number of people that we have in there now, you know, what, eight, ten years ago, there was only maybe eighty or so in the in the jail per day, and they're now.
We have a hundred and fifty now, and we still don't have enough staff that they tell us we need, and, um, more mouths to feed, and, um, obviously.
Yeah, more security.
Can I ask a jail funding question, just for curiosity?
Sure, go right ahead, sir.
What counties contribute to the funding of the this new jail, other than Jefferson County?
That's it.
Only Jefferson.
Only Jefferson County.
Only Jefferson County.
We we only take in prisoners from Jefferson County?
At this time.
At this time.
But we will have the option to take prisoners from other counties, as we are sending out prisoners, right today, we are sending prisoners out to other counties so that we don't get penalized for being overpopulated.
Is there, is there, is there money changing in?
Yes, 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 at a very expensive amount.
To the taxpayers.
And we can charge, if if we have open beds, and after the new jail is done, then then the county, then we can charge if someone needs, say, say, Switzerland County or Jennings County.
Up to thirty-five dollars a day, I believe.
I think it's around thirty-five dollars.
Thirty-seven dollars.
Just to educate the.
Yeah, you can go ahead and educate them a little bit more.
Our population level for the Jefferson County jail is a hundred and.
And nine.
Yes, and so we are actually overpopulated when we have a staff, uh, in-house at a hundred and eighty, and sending out thirty.
One forty-three.
Oh, one forty-three.
So, a hundred and nine is our max population, that is putting people where they should not be housed at.
Right.
That's like the drunk tank, the rec yard, so a hundred and nine is max capacity for the building for body population, there's not that many beds.
And if there's a portable bed and that type of thing, right?
I'm sorry.
You're using like a portable bed type of bed, yeah, at that time.
So for 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 taking in another county's prisoners, there's a per diem that's paid.
There would be, if we had the, had the ability to do that now, and it will be when.
But there's no, but they're not kicking in anything for the construction itself?
No, 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 sir. That is the law.
Another sheriff apartment can house for us, the sheriff can charge whatever he wants, up to thirty-seven fifty a day. So most counties take the thirty-seven fifty day to house our inmates for us, that's their cost for food, housing, staffing, and stuff like that.
But it's not transportation.
Medical needs.
It is not transportation.
All the luxuries.
All the luxuries.
So if we have open beds in the new jail and other counties are overcrowded, we could take those in at thirty-seven fifty a day.
Right?
Yeah, they're fed three meals a day.
You see, and that that's another thing I was gonna say, where, as you were saying.
But I will comment, uh, the one thing that I I think that our jail has done is we used to provide a warm meal at lunch for them. And in the last twelve months, we have eliminated a warm lunch, was was a huge cost savings to the county, and we went to a cold lunch, so lunch me.
I I've survived under lunches, all of us have.
I don't, no, I've.
I mean, you know, my lunch is hot if it's a hot day outside, you know, that's it.
So, I mean, I mean, they are in prison, so, I mean, it was not a big thing, but I mean, it costs things too.
Oh, yeah, no.
Our our biggest, one of our, it is our largest budget, is running the.
The jail.
The jail.
It is the largest amount of what we have from the county income, of the county taxes, yes.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a stupid, up ahead.
Yeah, no, it's just interesting that the jail is really gonna cost the taxpayers ultimately more money, right, like you just said, for having the jail here, why did we elect to have the jail here?
Because the state mandated, they mandated it.
Otherwise, they're gonna start fining this every day.
Yeah.
It was to prevent that.
So there, I don't mean, there's only one county in the state of Indiana that does currently have a jail, and that's Ohio County, they're now being forced to build a jail.
Yes.
That was the only county that had one, yeah, I don't know what their capacity is gonna be, but they currently house all their inmates in like Dearborn County or the surrounding counties, but the state's now forcing them to build one.
And almost a hundred percent of our inmates are there because of drugs.
Because of, uh-huh? Even here in this small little town. I was looking for Nirvana or Mayberry R F D.
It's everywhere, you just see it that way, it's just.
Southern North Carolina.
Do I have, I I I don't wanna cut you off, but do we have any other questions that, from any of the audience?
You need to come more often, John.
Yeah, you're more than welcome to come, with the questions that have come up tonight that you've asked are are good, they're good for us to 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 know, and and good for the county.
It's good for the public to know, too.
Absolutely, absolutely, now, this Heather, do you want us to vote on which one of these separate?
Yes, we need separate motions for.
Okay, first.
Every resolution.
Okay, the first one I have is resolution, I put the county council of Jefferson County, is this is the the Coombe Bridge, and the Coombe Bridge proposal is point zero six. Do I have a motion?
Still moves.
Okay, do I have a second, Pam, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'm gonna pass this, I'll pass this up this way, then we'll come back. Okay, on the Coombe courthouse, same thing, uh, Jefferson, uh, county council of Jefferson County for the Coombe courthouse, and its new amount will be point zero one two. So do I have a motion to, for that amount? Chris, do I have a second? Okay, Heather, okay, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, here's. Okay, one more, uh, the Jefferson, uh, county council of Jefferson County, this is for the Coombe, uh, Coombe, uh, jail, and the proposed amount is point zero one five three, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Move, second.
Great, I'd like a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And again, just to reiterate to the media here, this is just a redistribution of these Coombe funds, these are not increases.
They're not an increase, they're just, they're just, uh.
I know, I got it, I got it, I understand.
We thank you for the questions, and 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 the taxpayers.
We'd rather ask your thing on social media, um, cause that's when the look, the the entries just switch.
Well, that's what I get a kick out of, this social media thing, which I'm not a big fan of anyhow, and I see all this going, uh, back and forth, and oh, did you do this, this, this? I I like to hear from the horse's mouth, so to speak, you know, just to see what's really going on, what what is accurate information? And I've got a question for you in a minute.
Okay, um, we have, um, interlocal agreement, you should have got, got an interlocal agreement for, uh, the nine-one-one. Do you have any comment, Ray, you are, I represented you with the nine-one-one on this, do you have any comment?
The work, we're, uh, we're making some policy changes and getting everything down in the handbook, and, uh, things have, uh, are moving along, um, I'm happy with the progress we're making.
Okay, okay, does everybody have a chance to to read that and so forth on that thing? I went through it, I had been on the nine-one-one board prior to you, and and everything, and I, there was some changes and some not changes and stuff, and so I also talked with the nine-one-one director this morning, and she felt that that it was fine to, and and and, and the commissioners received this, uh, Thursday night, is my understanding, and I think I saw their signature here somewhere, uh, on one of the, I don't see.
It's on the back side of that.
Oh, one of, oh, yeah, here it is, it's on the back side, so then we will all have to sign this one if we, if passed, so.
My only question after I read the previous section, I received it, the advisory committees, those weren't, aren't new to this interlocal agreement, are they?
No, we only established their responsibilities.
Yeah, we're on a new responsibility, they they have been there, and they have been able to report to the to the nine-one-one board and everything. They do not have any voting rights, the advisory people on that part, but they, in other words, they kinda check things out and then come back to, and tell them the advisory, is that, am I correct?
I mean, if things come up and they need someone to look at it, and those, they're kind of already standing, so they go and meet, discuss it, and then bring it.
Because they are, they are more involved in that section of the nine-one-one part.
Yeah, but they're not necessarily meeting all the time, just when it's needed.
Right, so any other questions? Do I have a motion that we accept the interlocal agreement for the nine-one-one?
So move.
Okay, Chris, do I have a second? Young second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Would, who would be, if I needed a list of, um, committee members for each of these separate advisory committee members, who would be the best person to provide that?
So the interlocal identifies organizations, not necessarily individuals, so that that would tell, like, cause it may be, you know, someone from the fire, if.
They change.
Yeah, it may not be as, same person each time, but.
See, the, yeah, the board, um, structure, um, if it's your term limits, there, um, that's different, obviously, than it may be if it's a police operational advisory committee this month, Hannover Mason, this person there, so you're saying that.
Well, they have to, they have to designate it, I mean, usually it's that, you know, it would be the chief of police or Hannover Madison and the sheriff, and but if they can't make it, they might have it somewhere that they would designate to go.
I think it says that in, in the, in the paperwork. Okay, here's, here's where you need to sign, this is what you always gets back to. Thank you. I have one other thing before we finish up with the other resolutions. I'm on the Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, and they had me listed and everything and so forth, and everything, all, and I've been going to the meetings, and I have one tomorrow at noon and everything, but for some reason, they sent this to Heather for, to be refilled out, so is it okay for I just go ahead and get that signed and finished up and everything, and get it back to Heather, so she can send it in? Cause I inquired in January, I said, we didn't get anything, and they said, oh, you didn't need any, you did, we had you already here, cause I was already serving and everything, so I'll take care of that with you, Heather, then, and and we'll get that done, so we can get that back to them, and I'll take it with me tomorrow with.
Absolutely.
Um, and everything, okay, let's go back to our little cheat sheet we have. We have the, that's the Vincent Madison contract, is that correct?
Um, yes, so after their last meeting, they have increased, um, two line items after moving the money to the county. They need this budget increase for the V M I contract and the V M I marketing to be increased. So I advertised those so that you could vote on those tonight.
Is that, is that Mr. On?
So, no, it's a, they have their own fund, and we just moved their budget, their starting budget, but this is their, really their first year of doing their budgeting through the county.
So when we we put forth the budget, it was based on last year's numbers, and then V M I came in with some numbers that it increased, so making the budget in line with what was going on.
Okay, do you have any comment, Gary, on this, or anything different, or?
Well, they needed a contract, I think it's been agreed on.
That that they.
Moving forward, yes?
Okay, do I have a motion that these, um, funds be, um, in care of?
Motion, I raise hand, buddy.
All those in favor? Okay, uh, then we have an additional advertising amount of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, and and that was for.
This is all of.
That's for our resolution.
This is all of the line items you've already approved.
Okay, so that's the two thousand twenty-two.
Except to the rainy day amount that.
Right, so we have, for fund one thousand is ten thousand dollars, for fund eleven eighty-six is seventy-eight, eight thirty, for fund seventy-one oh five is ten thousand, and fund, fund name, uh, seventy-three oh four, a hundred and seventy-four thousand, and that would come to a total of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. So this is a resolution, um, that oh eight, that we would need additional appropriation resolution dated fourth, twelve, twenty-two. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Right, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Pam, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I know we all appreciate, um, I know we discussed, like, little cheat sheet, you know, as opposed to wasting more paper, um, each, um, each monthly request, kinda keeping that all in, in, uh, one document, and and I'm fine with the resolutions being combined as well. Is there a need to have the, there's no need to have the full fund name, like, the seventy-five oh one or the eleven eighty-six, there's no need on this to have the full fund?
Not on the actual resolution, that is, I think it's pretty standard information that I actually upload, everything is in Gateway, backline number.
I do have a couple of little other things out here on, um, there, I think you all received this, this is the Dixon, um, Juvenile Center, that this is where we are sending our juveniles, am I correct, to this?
I think it is one of the facilities we use.
One of the facilities, and their new rate is going to be a hundred and sixty dollars per day. Did you, this, I got this in the amount, yeah, I didn't, I just wanted to make that aware that everybody, that that you all would come on.
When does that start?
Uh, as of May one.
Okay, I can't remember the date.
So that may affect some of the amount of money that we had put in, to be sending them.
A hundred and forty before?
I think it was around a hundred and forty, you said a hundred, the rate was, it wasn't a hundred and forty, and has been in place for more than twelve years. The new rate will be a hundred and sixty, so just, that's for information for you. And then our other little information, uh, with the audit, you know how we get to pay for those sort of things? Uh, whether we wanna be audited by the state or not, they let us pay the bill, and this is the federal part of that audit that we've had, and it's nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Which I think during.
That's just a federal part, that is not, that's not the state part, which I know is gonna be conservative more than that.
The state portion, and I do not remember the exact amount, but it's in the one hundred dollar a day ballpark for state, I believe. But the federal portion was nearly eight hundred dollars a day for that audit.
Exactly, isn't that fun?
And there was, they basically just did that, um, coronavirus, um, really fun.
The, 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 they were, they were doing, they were doing nineteen, twenty, and, no...
That's just for that twenty.
Twenty, yeah, for the twenty.
Because it went over the federal...
Right.
Amount of grants.
And would you anticipate to see the state, not like that?
So...
It'll have to be a...
I have to pay that unappropriated immediately, and then when we do the spring tax distribution, the county's portion of the taxes are actually reduced by that amount.
That we will receive into our...
Into general fund.
County general fund.
That's fine, that's great.
That's great, yes. Yeah, that's always exciting, and everything. Is there anything else? I know that...
So do we need to vote on this?
Do we have to vote on it?
No, it was just for your information.
This is kind of what, kind of like, we don't, we get to pay it anyway.
We got to pay it anyway.
Right. I know there were some other things that, that were sent to us, I don't know whether they need to be discussed tonight or not, if anybody wants to discuss them, Gary?
Yeah. And I want to appreciate the commissioners for proposing your art funding, and I don't know if we have to vote on this or not, but what I'd like to ask the commissioner, I just want to ask the commissioners a question. Would it be possible for us to meet one-on-one with one of you about these proposals? Because there's going to be things that we agree on, things that we don't. Is that a possibility, or ask the prison, the board of commissioners?
Sure.
It has to be a public...
You can, you can't go one-on-one?
No, it has to be a public meeting.
Public meeting, okay.
I'll be happy to.
How would we handle, I mean, well, I mean, do you want to go through some of that tonight or not?
We would go through the same process, it was not advertised to be talked, one, to discuss.
Discuss, right.
Well, I, okay.
Next meeting.
So we could advertise for another joint session.
Absolutely, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, that's what I want, yeah.
Okay. I will work with everyone's calendars and try to get something together.
Yes, we agree.
Thank you. Anything else, Miss Heather, that you can think of that I haven't got covered?
I don't think so.
For those of you, I vice chairman, so our chairman is not here tonight, he had a medical issue, and so, you know, I found out, I found out...
You did a good job pitching.
Thank, I found out at quarter to four, you know.
Sent her a little surprise.
I, I had checked my emails just before I left home, and she sent me a little message and told me that I was injured, you know, so anything else from the audience, if anybody has anything or anything that they like, anything from the commissioners that you all would like to, anything that you need to bring up, how anything's going, or what we need to, anything else?
My motion to adjourn.
Oh, I think, I think, John, didn't you have...
I look like I'm just seething with just something you said. Now, a couple of comments, you know, it's interesting about the animal population we have here. With taxes going up, it would be wonderful, and we would be kind of on the forefront of something new and innovative, that is to actually have taxpayers' dollars pay for animals to get fixed. What a concept. We wouldn't have so many problems with loose animals running around and, and, you know, every pet, impregnating another pet and all that, and I thought, you know, to make it more affordable for people, it would be really affordable if it was paid through property taxes, to implement some kind of a program to do that. I mean, it's just a thought, you know, for it like a preventative measure, kind of like...
I'm going to refer to you, we have an animal shelter person that's on the animal shelter board that is here tonight, that is a commissioner.
Oh.
So, I don't, I'm not throwing you in the bus, Bobby, I hope, but...
Here comes the bus.
As you, and, and, you know, I mean, it is, I tell you, many people in the community pay, you know, and you cannot, cannot get an animal from the animal shelter without it being spayed and neutered.
Well, that's wonderful, but, but so many people don't, I, I've done that myself. I adopted a cat, I call him Sir Pissalot, but anyhow, I adopted him and he was...
I just got it.
And, but anyhow, I've had him for almost four years, and I love, he's a great cat, and, you know, of course, I got him from the shelter, but does everybody do that, follow the proper protocol? No, they do not. A lot of people I've seen around, they just like, oh, let the cats go play and have, you know, make babies and all that all over the place. And I've had to call Janet, which she's wonderful, I, I think one of the best people I've ever met in this town.
Janet Jarty.
Yes.
She is my favorite.
I love her.
And I'll tell her you do.
And, no, I've told her myself, you know, and, but she's brought many cases, and we've trapped a lot of, especially male cats, and I have mentioned possums and some other things I don't recognize, you know, coming from L.A., it's like, what is that? You know, but anyhow, but, you know, I kind of thought, and she kind of agreed with me, she said, you know, if more people would get their pets, and not even pets, the ones that are just feral animals out there, you know, spay and neuter, because it's so important, yet it's so expensive to have it done, so kind of, you know, it, it doesn't make sense, and there's so many animals that should be, you know, well, fixed and are not, and it really helped.
The animal shelter is getting information out about a low-cost spay and neuter, especially for cats, and they have a feral cat package. So I think that program is doing great things and helping the community out in those needs. But I think it's just now getting...
Just not getting, you're going, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, and then the only other thing I was going to ask you to, okay, so I was told last year, and I did last night again, to look at estimated tax total on my property taxes, to go on the Gateway site, right, you know, to the Indiana, Jefferson County, indiana.gov, go on the Gateway, to do, and put in all your exemptions, your assessed value, homeowner occupied exemption, all that, right? Well, I did that three times over, and it came up with about a forty-five percent less cost on that than what my actual bill is. That's where I have the problem.
I would highly recommend visiting the assessor's office, asking them to audit that.
Audit that.
Ask to audit it, okay.
There'd be an issue.
I did find an instance today, and I have never had this happen, and today I noticed that that site calculated the homestead supplemental at a larger rate than what our tax system did, but it was still the same rate, but the calculation was off what it actually took off. And I've never had that problem before, I'm going to ask the LGF about that.
Okay.
Because it's a state site where you select your county, you select your township, and you go down through everything, but this was the very first time in years of using it that I've ever caught a difference. So I was going to email the state later about that.